Frank Attali.
President.
Cleveland. Conwell. Griffin. Hairston.
President.
Johnson.
Here.
Bashir Jones. Joe Jones. Kay.
Joe Jones is here.
Thank you. Casey.
Present.
McCormick.
Present.
Mooney.
Here.
Polensik. Santana. Sly.
Present.
Spencer.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let me begin with our preamble. This committee, the whole hearing, is being held during the COVID-19 emergency declaration in accordance with Ohio's open meeting laws as amended by House Bill 404. This meeting is being held using the Zoom platform and being livestreamed on YouTube. It can also be seen on Cleveland City Council website and from Council's Facebook page. Please note that this meeting will not be broadcast on Channel 20. In accordance with Ohio Open Meetings Regulations as amended by House Bill 404, notice of this committee was publicly posted. The committee hearing will be conducted as all committee hearings in accordance with Council rules and Roberts' orders. The Chair will facilitate the meeting and call in person to speak. If you wish to speak, please use the raise your hand option. Please limit your comments to the matters before today's committee. As usual practice, any actions we vote on during this committee will be done by voice vote as recorded, called and recorded by the clerk. Please make sure that you are visible for all votes and for any participation, any comments that you make during today's hearing. At today's committee, the whole, we have three legislation from three departments that will be under consideration, and we're going to go in this order for those that may be watching. We have one piece that's from City Planning. We have Public Safety, and then a number of ordinance for Public Utilities. Everything that we will hear today has had a prior committee hearing and has had its first by the appropriate committee, but we'll hear them before we go into, in committee the whole, before we go into the council meeting. So with that, again, the order will be Planning Commission, Safety, and then Utilities. Is Director Collier with us? Is Director Howard with us?
Yes, I'm here. Councilman, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Okay, so we're going to push, say, we're going to push Planning until the Director, Director Collier is able to join us, and we're going to begin with Public Safety. I have five ordinances for consideration. Is that your count, Director?
I have four, Council President. I have nine forty-one, nine forty-three.
Forty-four, forty-six. Yeah, four. My count is off. I have to go over a different page. Okay, it's complicated. Okay, I'm going to begin with ordinance number 9412020. Councilmember Griffin Kelly, by departmental request, an emergency ordinance authorizes Director of Public Safety to apply for and accept a grant from the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services for the FY20 State Burn Memorial Justice Assistance Grant for the Operation of the Northern Ohio Law Enforcement Task Force, and authorizing Director to enter into agreements with various municipalities, Cuyahoga County, and police agencies needed to implement the grant. Director?
Thank you, Council President. Ordinance number 9412020 is passed by Council would authorize me, the Director of Public Safety, to apply for and accept a $130,984 grant from the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services for fiscal year 20, State Burn Memorial Grant. This legislation will provide funding for the operation of the Northern Ohio Law Enforcement Task Force. The goal of the Office of Criminal Justice Services Justice Assistance Grant is to provide funding to law enforcement agencies for operating multi-agency task forces. The City of Cleveland will be reimbursed for costs associated with operating the divisions of Police, Police's Northern Ohio Law Enforcement Task Force, also known as the N O L E T F, which is a multi-agency drug task force that brings together state, federal, and local agents and investigators to ensure the most sophisticated investigation and prosecution resources are directed against organized drug trafficking groups. The task force partners include the Cleveland Division of Police, the FBI, the Internal Revenue Service, or IRS, U.S. Attorney's Office, Greater Cleveland Regional Transit Authority, Police Department, that's our Greater RTA, Ohio BCI, Ohio Adult Parole Authority, CMHA, Police Department, Cuyahoga County Sheriff's Department, and the Police Departments of Bedford, Lakewood, and Moreland Hills. The expenses to be reimbursed include that of personnel, contracts, travel, equipment, supplies, and other costs, and confidential funds. The amount for personnel is for police overtime and the amount of $27,031.43. Contracts, $29,999.43. That's for police overtime for partner agencies. Travel, the amount of $9,000. Equipment, $12,030 for computer and software supplies. Office supplies, $500. Other costs, $5,900. That's for vehicle maintenance, GPS data fees. And then confidential funds, $65,539.14. That's for buy money and surveillance cost for a total of $150,000. The grant period is from January 1, 2020, to December 31st, 20, I'm sorry, January 1, 2021, to December 31st, 2020, 21. We have received this grant annually since 2005, and for this, there is no match requirement.
Thank you. You answered my two questions, which was how long have we had this and what our match was, and there is no match required, and we've been doing this since 2005?
Yes.
Okay. This ordinance has been heard and recommended for passage by the Committee on Safety. Is Chairman Griffin with us?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chair.
Anything further on 9412020?
No, it's been vetted. I fully approve. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Charles Sly.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just so I'm clear through the Chair to the Director, the executive summary, all the expenses to be reimbursed that you outlined totals up to $150,000, but then the grant amount is for about 131. What's, where's that 19,000 difference between the grant amount and the expenses?
So that's the total expenses is what will, would be reimbursed. We would work through our best to work within the grant. That is a historical figure of the amount that we have had to utilize in the past. But the difference would be, and there's a second part to this grant as well, but we would work to operate within the grant funding.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Joe Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Will we have miscellaneous on this after the Director finishes his pieces? If we could have, I have a couple of questions, but it's miscellaneous.
Yeah, we can, if you can, but certainly we can when we're done with the legislation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Anything further on 9412020? Seeing no hands, ordinance number 9412020 stands approved. Ordinance number 9432020, Councilmembers Griffin Kelly, by departmental request, an emergency ordinance authorizing Director of Public Safety to apply for and accept a grant from the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services for the FY19 Ohio Drug Law Enforcement Fund Grant for the Operation of the Northern Ohio Law Enforcement Task Force, and authorizing Director to enter into agreements with Cuyahoga County Sheriff's Office and other entities to implement the grant. Director?
Thank you, Council President. Ordinance 9432020, if approved by Council, would authorize me, the Director of Public Safety, to apply for and accept grant funds, grant funds in the amount of $249,999.75 from the Ohio Criminal Justice Services for fiscal year 2019 Ohio Drug Law Enforcement Fund Grant. This grant will provide funding for the operation of the N O L E T F. That's the Northern Ohio Law Enforcement Task Force. There's a local match of $83,333.25 for a total budget of $333,333. The purpose of this grant is to provide funding for law enforcement agencies for operating multi-agency task forces. The City of Cleveland will be reimbursed for costs associated with operating the Division of Police's N O L E T F Task Force, which is a multi-agency drug task force that brings together state, federal, and local agents and investigators to ensure the most sophisticated investigation and prosecution resources are designated, are directed against organized drug trafficking groups. It's the same task force partners as previously stated. That's the Cleveland Division of Police, the FBI, the IRS, U.S. Attorney's Office, RTA, Police Department, Ohio BCI, Ohio Adult Parole Authority, CMHA, PD, Cuyahoga County Sheriff's Office, and the Law Department, I'm sorry, the Police Departments of Bedford, Lakewood, and Moreland Hills. This is for, the expenses to be reimbursed include personnel, the amount of $76,268, contracts, $78,246, travel expenses in the amount of $15,000, equipment, $42,800, supplies, $1,000, other costs, $17,400, and then confidential funds, $102,579. This is a total of $333,333. The grant period is from January, I'm sorry, from July 1, 2020, to December 31st, 2021. We've received this grant annually since 2005.
Thank you, Director. And our match is 83, just 83,000?
That's correct, 83,333.
Right.
Twenty-five cents.
I don't have any further questions. I'm familiar with this grant since we've had it for, you know, over 10 years now. We see this every year, but this was also heard and recommended for approval by the Committee on Safety. Councilman Griffin, I think further on ordinance number 94320.
No, Mr. Chairman, that's been fully heard and vetted by the Safety Committee, and we approve. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilman Kevin Conwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you very much. Hey, here's the thing. I just had a drive-by shooting in my ward on Hopkins last night. I need to know, Mr. President, and through the Chair, to the Safety Director, give me some outcome measures. How is this benefiting our neighborhoods? When every time I look around, residents call me, I do knock and talk with the Police Department, dealing with drugs in the community. I have drugs that's out of control in some of our community. I have drugs on Parkway Drive. I have drugs just definitely dealing with Hopkins. I'm meeting with the interrupters tomorrow so I can personally knock on doors in my neighborhood, Mr. President. I need to know, how is this benefiting Glenville as well as the City of Cleveland? We keep passing this grant every year, and I have the same issues and concerns in the neighborhood, and people are leaving. They're leaving the City of Cleveland because of these drug dealers, and I yield.
Thank you, Councilman. Director, do you want to give some of the outcomes of this grant and what it's been able to do for neighborhoods over the years?
If you give me a moment, Council President, I can pull that up. I don't have the document in front of me, but I do have it in my email. If I can have a moment, I can come back to that if you like.
If you'd look to respond to the Councilman's question.
And, Mr. President, I will take the task force, because I personally, you know, I walk my ward constantly, and, you know, we do the lid drops and all that. I'll take you to some areas that is more than an assumption that they're selling drugs, and they've been selling drugs there for years. I mean, for years, man, and I need help in my neighborhood. We're trying to build a community up. We're building houses, but people are not going to come with this crime being out of control. So when he, when he presents to us, Mr. President, and we pass these grants, and I know we're working on a council oversight committee, subcommittee now, we're working on that, but he should bring back, and I'm not beating up on the Safety Director, he should bring back telling about milestones, how they stopped drugs in Huff area, how they stopped drugs in the Tremont area, how they stopped drugs and over there in Fairfax community. It should be milestones that he show us how this is benefiting and making the quality of life better for the residents in the City of Cleveland.
Sure. So, Director, if that's not readily available, is that something you can, because when we're done with safety, we're going to move to utilities, and we've got a lot of ordinances, can you get that to the Council before we take a vote on it after committee the whole is done?
I can do that.
Okay, so we'd like to just, you know, what are some of the results of this grant? What are some of the, what is this allowed us to do to address the Councilman's concerns?
At the street level.
All right, thank you. We'll get that before, before the council meeting.
Mr. Chair, I think the Police Chief has something to say.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Chief Williams, if I could, real quick?
Oh, yes, please.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We had some technical difficulties in getting on. Lieutenant Kincaid, who is the OIC of the task force, is here in the room with us. I don't know if you can see him. I can't really see where our camera is placed, but he has some of those preliminary stats. If you want him to go over them real quick for the Councilman?
Yeah, if you could, please.
Please do. I'm sorry, Mr. President, and just, it's anxious. I'm anxious to hear it.
Yeah, please.
Yes, sir. This is Lieutenant Kincaid. I am the commander of the Northern Ohio Law Enforcement Task Force. I just want to briefly go over 2020. Was a unique year for us due to COVID, obviously, but we were able to execute 62 search warrants. We conducted seven federal wiretap cases. We seized 42 firearms, 39.9 pounds of cocaine, and 9.6 pounds of fentanyl and heroin, and seized $2,280,000 in drug trafficking currency and proceeds. The task force conducts long-term investigations, so we start at the bottom and work our way to the top. These aren't overnight successes. Some of these investigations take six months to a year, could even go longer. They're far-reaching so we can get to the root, we can reach out to the drug dealer that's benefiting off the violence in Cleveland that lives in Solon or lives in Westlake, even Arizona and California. We have a lot of assets, over 30 investigators from multiple federal, state, and local agencies. We work with our vice units in Cleveland. We're able to provide them high-tech equipment that they didn't have in the past to assist with your local area complaints. We're a force multiplier for these vice units as well. They can reach out to us, and they might only have four or five guys working. They can give the task force a call, and we can supplement their personnel with 10 to 15 people in a matter of a phone call. So we also work closely with the heroin-involved death investigation team. We're working to secure funding eventually to provide more Narcan and Safe Use Kits for the unprecedented amount of heroin overdose deaths that continue. Our investigators will be able to hand out Narcan and Safe Use Kits to the family members and friends on scene of these overdose deaths and affected community and those that are addicted right at ground level. So although the task force doesn't generally take a neighborhood complaint of a drug house, that generally goes to a vice unit, that is part of a bigger picture of a long-term investigation that the task force could pick up and expand to ultimately track down who is in charge and eventually could come down with a, you know, 20 to 30-person indictment, taking the whole organization off the street and out of your neighborhood.
Thank you.
Well, you know, you know, Mr. President, I have been dealing with some homes in my neighborhood for over a year dealing with drugs, and, you know, I hear that on paper, and I like to hear the outcome measures, which is great. Do we need more resources to make it better? I don't know, but I'm catching it, man, in my neighborhood. Residents are calling me, and I personally, I personally, and I reach out to Sammy. Sammy is a good commander, and I, and I personally, to the Chair, to the Police Chief, I've knocked on doors dealing with drug dealers. I've knocked on doors dealing with nuisance houses myself because it's so bad, and the residents, one resident told me last night that she's talking about leaving the City of Cleveland. So, you know, I hear on paper, but the other outcome measures, I mean, why do I got to deal with a house on Hopkins for two years? That's crazy, man, all on Parkway Drive.
Yeah, Councilman, I hear your concerns, and I know you work hard every day on those things. I think this grant is going to, you know, help in that, but we'll make sure that you have all the outcome measures that you need to make a good decision for yourself. But we, I hear you loud and clear, Councilman.
Right, and you know, Mr. President, I hear the numbers, and I'm glad I hear the numbers, but here's, here's how you quantify it better. I mean, also, you tell me that we have, let's say, arrested five houses in the Huff community. You tell me that we have arrested five houses in Fairfax with neighborhoods where I can touch it. You see, that have up close view of what's going on. You tell me that the house on Hopkins was raided beforehand and what, how much prevention that we did. I mean, you give me numbers, but you're not mentioning neighborhoods and how you're making the quality of life better for people that live on Somerset. You're not telling me that. So I hear the numbers, but I want to, I want to know streets and neighborhoods and communities. The City of Cleveland, Mr. President, is a city of communities. I can't build, I can't build 105 where only, where only, Mr. Police Chief, it's the way it is today. Where Somerset is the way it is today. Yes, I am frustrated because I'm out there. I don't have a gun. I don't have an armor vest. I'm out there by myself, and the neighbors are looking out the house watching Councilman Conwell. All I have is a mask on, just like you, Mr. Police Chief, and some, and a lot of times the residents come out of their homes, they come out of their homes without a mask, and everything is just flying, and I have a family to go back to also. I need help in Glenville. We're building Glenville up, but the drug dealers, they're winning a war with you guys. They're winning a war with you guys, I'm telling you right now. Mr. President, I yield. I'm meeting at Glenville tomorrow with the interrupters because we're going on Hopkins door-to-door to try to find out what's going on and about what we had with a drug issue, with a drug issue that went bad on Hopkins yesterday, and I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I hear you loud and clear. Councilman Joe Jones. Please unmute yourself.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can you hear me better now?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. First, I'd like to, you know, I know that Kerry Howard has inherited this awful situation that we have in the City of Cleveland as it relates to crime, but I do want to thank him for his being able to respond back to me when I have issues. I really appreciate the communications back and forth. But, you know, as you're hearing, Mr. President, and to the, I know the Safety Committee Chairman is hearing this too, this is a major issue. And I knew that whoever took upon the responsibility of becoming the Chairman of the Safety Committee, I wasn't going to let up on this issue of safety. And for the safety people who are listening, the citizens are crying out for help. And so, right now, Mr. President, to the Chief, what are the possibilities that you could organize, you know, a hearing where you can listen to your actual constituency base that our taxpayers who pay for all of this, we're not seeing the presence in our communities as relates to police visibility, fundamental police work. At the last Safety Committee, Mr. Chairman, we talked about the police being more proactive during the time when Mike White was the mayor of the City of Cleveland. We were actually literally busting drug houses in the City of Cleveland and putting, boarding them up and putting ribbons on those doors. In terms of police capacity to be on the offense, I don't see police up and down in my neighborhood. You know, normally around elections times, you would see police patrolling the area. You would see them attacking those who are violators, you know, traffic violations. We don't see any of those basic services, and here's what highlights it the most, Mr. President.
Okay, then I'd like to on your own.
I live, I live over here next to Shaker Heights, Wansville, Maple, and Garfield. They have seven council members and the mayor and a full complement of police that serve their area. So my neighborhood is the same size of these communities, and in some instances, their populations are smaller. For an example, Wansville only makes up 14,000 people, and Maple Heights makes up 23,000 people. I have 25,700 people, and I just don't see the police engaged and working. So I just want to ask this question, Mr. President, when, when Mr. Howard or any of the safety people make all of these, you know, presentations, where are they? Where is the police?
Okay, so.
Why can't we get them down here on the ground working? We have 1,600 soldiers. Every year, Mr. President, I sit at this table, and I ask the Chief, do you have all of what it takes in terms of the resources to do the job that's in front of you? So my request, Mr. Chairman, is to the mayor of the City of Cleveland, and I will put it in a writing, to your leadership, because you're the president of Cleveland City Council. And to the Chief Williams, we need to have you guys come out and have an honest discussion with the neighbors of this, of the City of Cleveland, of how you're going to keep us safe. The homicide rates.
Councilman, I'm going to, I'm going to interrupt you for a second, Councilman. I hear you loud and clear. We're steering pretty far from the ordinance that we're talking about. I know that this is a very, an issue that. Let me just, let me just finish to say that I hear your frustration. I understand. I hear your advocacy for the citizens of Ward One, loud and clear. I heard Councilman Conwell's frustration. I think we're all frustrated with the state of crime. Quite frankly, if you're not frustrated with the state of crime in the City of Cleveland, you shouldn't be on this screener and this job.
Then we should, then we shouldn't pass any more legislation from the safety departments until they get their act together. There needs to be some accountability. And so, and so, so we, I've been frustrated, Mr. President, sitting at this table from day one, on this issue of safety in the neighborhood. It's unacceptable when a young man works really hard every single day, Mr. President, to provide for his family, who's, who's unfortunately mom is on drugs, who's taking care of his handicap brother, gets off to work every day like clockwork, comes home, does what he needs to do, go to school, and then he is, he's caught and shot and killed, makes it two or three blocks and dies out on the cement. And so, Mr., Mr., Mr. President, the issues of crime is very serious in our community. My niece was strangled to death and killed over on Durkey Avenue, two blocks away from my, actually from my community. When we start talking about the crime in our neighborhood, if, if this was happening, Mr. President, was happening in the City of Cleveland, was happening in our neighborhood, was happening in Shaker Heights, or happening in Garfield, there would be a state of an emergency. Someone would lose their job.
Sure.
And right now, no one's losing their job. Nothing is happening. We're sitting at this table. We're talking about these issues. So, Mr. President, as an elected official, as, as one of my colleagues, I plead with my colleagues who sit here, if we're going to get serious about making the City of Cleveland a great city, then we have to deal with this situation of crime.
Understood, Council.
And so, how can we, and then I won't say anything, Mr. President, for miscellaneous. Mr. President, I won't say anything on the miscellaneous so I can preserve the time because I know you have to move the agenda, and I appreciate you, no, I appreciate you giving me the time, Mr. President, so I won't say anything, but I would like to see some action taken where the administration comes out to its citizens and to Ward One in particular, and then have a presentation of how we're going to make things different from where they are and what they are right now.
Again, Councilman, I respect the passion that you bring. I respect your concerns. I respect you and we represent your constituents, so thank you for those comments. I will ask folks if we can kind of get back to if there's any questions on the legislation, but I, the frustration is legitimate, and I appreciate everybody's, everybody's passion and comments. And again, we have a problem with crime, and I think that that is, that is beyond discussion. It's a crisis, and we all need to be dealing with this. So, so thank you, Councilman. If there's nothing further, ordinance number 9432020 stands approved. Ordinance number 9442020, Councilmember Griffin Kelly, by departmental request, an emergency ordinance authorizing Director of Public Safety to apply for and accept a grant from the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services for the FY19 Project Safe Neighborhood Grant to fund the Police Homicide Review Commission and authorizing one or more contracts with the Cuyahoga County Prosecutor's Office to implement the grant. Director? You're muted, Director. Still muted, Director. All right. There we go.
Apologies. The Council, the President, ordinance number 9442020, if approved by City Council, would authorize me, the Director of Public Safety, to apply for and accept a grant in the amount of $20,374.95 from the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services for the fiscal year 19, 2019, Project Safe Neighborhoods Grant. Funding will be used to fund a homicide review commission. Members of the Division of Police and the Prosecutor's Office meet monthly to review both open and closed cases. This in-depth case reviews, review of homicides examines the victims, the offenders, associates, witnesses, circumstances, and settings of homicide events. The purpose of the Cleveland Homicide Review Commission is to solve homicides in a more efficient and effective manner, to gain a better understanding of homicides through strategic. of homicides through strategic problem solving, to develop innovative and effective responses and preventive strategies that result in a reduction of homicides, and to help better focus available prevention and intervention resources. The expenses to be reimbursed include personnel in the amount of $4,945.60, contracts in the amount of $4,905.35, travel expenses $5,524, and other costs in the amount of $73.59 as for witness relocation costs. A total of $20,374.95. This is the second year we've received this grant. There's no local match required. The grant period is from November 1st, 2020 to December 31st, 2021.
Thank you, Director. No match on 944. We had it for two years. Can you tell us where, this has been an awful year for, for homicides. What is our solve rate? Does this assist in, you know, in solving homicides that are, that are open? Director or Chief?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I could real quick.
Yes, please.
Our current, our current solve rate in 2020 was about 49%, but if you roll in the 71% solve rate in 2019, because it's a continual process, it doesn't just end at the end of that year, that calendar year, it continues on into that next year. And currently in 2021, there, there'll be homicides that are solved from 2020. Commander Conley's here. He can speak more on what the commission itself does and who's involved in this process. It's really a valuable process that aids us in solving more homicides here in the city of Cleveland.
Yeah, this is Commander Conley. That's correct. The commission is led by the Cleveland Police Department and Cuyahoga County Prosecutor's Office. The people that attend, members of the ATF, FBI, Prosecutor's Office, the U.S. Attorney's Office, adult parole, we have social workers, and we have representatives from all five police districts. Each month we, we send out two to three cases that we're investigating and it's a group effort. We all sit through a presentation from the Prosecutor's Office and it's basically a brainstorm session. We put, we kind of put everybody's heads together. We use the assets that are brought in from all those different areas. And, and in that framework alone, we've probably solved four or five homicides just sitting down with that group of people and we're, we were able to identify a suspect and eventually, you know, prosecute that suspect.
Thank you. So Commander, does this grant, does this, has this grant led to a better solve rate or a better process by which helps you solve homicides?
It does because it, it creates that collaboration. It brings in everybody into the same room and we're, we're all sharing information. And, and also we, we bring in some of the outer, inter-ramps, sorry, some of the inner ring suburbs because that violence is bleeding off into that, into that, that area. And they have also information that we provide to them and we, and they provide to us. So it absolutely is helpful.
Thank you. And ordinance number 944 has been heard and recommended for approval by the committee on Safety. Chairman Blaine Griffin, do you have comments on 94420?
They're fully vetted and passed by the Safety Committee, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Kevin Conwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's a real quick question. I support this, this legislation. However, with the technology ShotSpotter, where are we at with that, putting that in the neighborhood so we can hear where the shots are coming from, so we could do prevention? Prevention is the key also with solving homicides or anything. If we know the ShotSpotters, it can help us out. And I yield.
On this point, Councilman Blaine Griffin?
Mr. Chairman, I've talked with the folks implementing the trial run of ShotSpotter in the, in the fourth district as of right now. We'll be bringing them to the table for the Safety Committee and going over some of their preliminary results and then looking at how we can actually bring the project to scale at a later date. So I would encourage everybody to really be involved with the Safety Committee. We'll be having a hearing on that in the very near future. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And, and, and here's, this is another quick, real quick question. Mr. President, when we had community policing, when people would walk in the streets, I hear what the, the chief is narrating about crime. But when you have people walking the streets, it gives you an up close view and a sensitive ear. And in that way, people can tell you, Police Chief, he was a community policing. You have people that would tell you where the scene of crime is at before it even happened or tell you there's an issue or concern going on in a certain house. We have intelligence like that because then we have better relationships with the residents and as well as the police officers. That need to be in there. ShotSpotters as well as people walking the beat. And I yield.
Thank you, Councilman. And I encourage you, I know Councilman Griffin is going to have a hearing on that topic and look forward to that discussion, but I appreciate your, your input in this and how that relates to homicide solve rate.
Mr. Chair, if I could real quick, we, you know, we've kind of got off topic a little bit. I, I just want to make one quick statement.
Please.
You know, if, if we're, you know, we're police officers and our job is to get out there and, and prevent crimes, solve crimes and community engagement, all that good stuff. If we're looking at this whole explosion of crime as being only a police issue, then we're totally missing the boat. You know, my predecessor who, Councilman Jones praises all the time about the fourth district and things that happen out there when he was Councilman formerly, and I was a vice sergeant out there, always said, you know, we can't arrest our way out of this problem. And that crime is a manifestation of a lot of social ills, not just crime itself. So if we're just looking at more policemen and police enforcement, then we're missing the boat on this. And we're always going to have crime in the city to this degree if we don't look at these other factors. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And again, appreciate his comments. On ordinance number 9442020, Councilman Joe Jones. On the ordinance, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank my colleague, Kevin Conwell, for his, his continued passion on trying to make sure that we have systems and measures of accountability as relates to various different legislation. And I'm honored to have the opportunity to, to serve with him. Now, on the legislation that's before us, we, we're constantly talking about this issue of detectives in our neighborhoods, in our communities. And, and we know that we lost a lot of people from the detectives department. So my question is determined to the Chief Williams, is how many detectives do we currently have in our department right now? And, and are they completely, fully trained?
Chief?
Mr. Chairman, through the Councilman, I don't know if I can answer that question right now. I don't have my book in front of me. We don't list detectives per se separately than patrol officers. We'd have to look at each individual detective function within the division. But I can get that number. And yes, our detectives are trained.
And, and Mr. Chairman, the reason why I ask that question is because I know of a couple of situations where evidence wasn't collected at the site and that the detectives that were there was just there for that, that particular period of time, but they were not trained. And that's the reason why I asked that question. And so now the issue is, Mr. President, to the chief, when will we be able to get that number? How many detectives? And is it fully staffed? And, and those are the questions, Mr. President, that makes our police department lag, is when we don't have those departments fully staffed. And when we do have issues where on those crime scenes, you know, we didn't even get to those, those locations when the crime happened, to check out and take a look around those buildings when those crimes have taken place. And then after the fact, you know, the evidence has been disturbed. And so.
Mr. Chair, if I could answer the Councilman's question.
Mr. Mr. President, I still have the floor. I'll yield, Mr. President, to the distinguished gentleman called Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Chair, our detectives don't collect evidence. We have a forensics unit, our crime scene investigators, they actually come out and collect that evidence. Our detectives investigate crimes. So I, I, I think we have our Safety Committee meeting, we can actually go through with the Councilman what that process is, what responsibilities are within the division as far as detectives, crime scene, crime scene folks, as well as our patrol officers and our other support folks within the division. We can break that down.
And, and, and that would be really good, Mr. Mr. President, because there are a number of incidents that happened this summer where we even have private detectives have now went out. These are former police officers and the information that they're giving me, Mr. President, is damning on how we operate and function as a police department in the city of Cleveland as relates to detective work. Now, let me just say this, Mr. President, there are some great detectives in the city of Cleveland. I, I really appreciate the work that they do. Some of these, some of these issues that we are faced with in the city would not have been resolved because of their due diligence. And some of them, you know, I just, my hat's off to them for the work that they do. So with that being said, Mr. President, on this particular piece, I would like to know how many detectives, you know, we currently have in the police department right now. And, and I'm going to ask that question again. Are they fully and completely been trained? And then, Mr. Mr. President, this would be a question for the budget. I'm putting it in front right away. How many police do we need to have on the streets, Mr. President, to keep our citizens safe, to do the work that we're supposed to do as, as a functioning police department and to resolve the issues that are impacting us as a business community and as citizens in a negative way?
Thank you. So can you speak to the Councilman's concerns? I mean, you don't know the number of detectives. Can you tell us whether they are properly trained, every detective that we do have?
There is a little background noise in your question, Mr. Chairman. But I think I get the gist of it. Again, I'll get the total number of detectives, but what the Councilman has to understand is that we have detectives from financial crimes to homicide and everything in between. And all those detectives are trained to do investigative work. We have crime scene officers that actually respond to a crime scene that collect and identify that evidence and take it in for analysis.
Understood. So, and let me just repeat the Council's questions. When you get the number of detectives, are all of our detectives properly trained?
Yes, sir. I will get to that number. And yes, our detectives are properly trained. Of course, in any operation, there are new detectives within an operation that are in that training phase. So again, I have to make the distinction between a detective and a crime scene investigator, the folks that actually come out and collect that evidence that's identified.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Anthony Hairston.
Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few questions before, just a comment that, you know, I echo my colleagues, that many parts of the community are truly like living in the wild, wild west for some. You wake up to gunshots, you go to sleep to gunshots, you walk out your door, you see drug activity taking place in front of your doorstep. At some point, as we've heard today, and we've been hearing from some of our other colleagues over a period of time, that we really, and to the Chairman of Safety, you know, you know, I know I'm not on safety, but I'll be whenever we have some of these hearings and conversations, I love to be a part of them, that we really are going into 2021, need to have a, a strong plan as relates to safety for our communities. I get that we are bringing on officers at a particular rate and that we are seeking grants, we're doing other things. But I'm interested to see, you know, how we incorporate additional pieces of technology and how we look to protect our community in addition to ShotSpotter. And, you know, I'm, I'm love to see where we are in the rollout of our camera system that we started what, last year through orders that we passed. And so, just trying to hear some of those updates and where we are with some of those issues. Because I think with the addition of those safety cameras in some of these communities can really help, right? It can serve as a, as a, as a great deterrent to some of the things that we are hearing our colleagues talk about today. And not putting 14 cameras in the, in the, in the park or in a parking lot of a rec center, you know, that we've heard has, has taken place from some of our colleagues in their, in their residence and in their, their ward. So, so I am fully supportive of the comments that we've heard today, but specifically to the ordinance. Does this, how long have we, we, we received this grant? Is this the first time we've gone out for this grant?
Director or Chief?
Councilman through the President. This is the, for this grant, it was the, it's the second, well, we, I'm sorry, give me one moment. This is the second year for this grant.
So this is the second year for this grant. Okay. So prior to receiving this grant, do we know what our solve rate was before we received these additional dollars to support these efforts?
Chief or Commander?
And I ask the question because I'm trying to understand whether this grant is really helping us, right? Whether this is something that we, we're just going out administratively to, hey, it's a grant, we're going to get it. And whether we are fully taking everything that comes along with, with this grant and putting it to work to really help solve these, these homicides here. Whether this is, is it helping us? Is it, has it been a real benefit or what?
Okay. Who could, Director or Chief or Commander?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commander Conley's here, but also Deputy Chief Patel. But, you know, this grant, again, has no match. There's no money coming out of the city's coffers for this grant. And it assists that team in doing the work that it has to do in solving homicides. But I'll let DC Patel and Commander Conley comment further.
Just a couple of points to the Councilman, to the Chair. Just want to mention that grant also involves the Northern Ohio Violent Crime Consortium. And that is a group hosted by the U.S. Attorney's Office, obviously six larger cities in north, northern Ohio. And part of that is there are researchers there from the University of Akron, Tenth State University, and Case Western Reserve University. Those researchers will assist us in plotting and mapping some of these results so we can get to those milestones. We have something actual tangible we can share later on. So that's one component of it that a lot of people are aware of, or you may not be aware of. But I also want to follow up on Commander Conley's comment earlier. We bring the group together and it's, it's a one hour meeting. It's planned ahead of time. Just, just so you understand a little more how it works, the, the mechanics of it. The prosecutor, the homicide unit will send out the cases they're going to review to the attendees about a week ahead of time. So they can review those cases, do a little homework on their own. When they come to the table, each one of those probably 30 to 40 investigators from various units and various departments across, across the city come prepared to deliver something. And I think that the number might even be a, a, a little greater, probably six to eight or so that were solved at the table. I can tell you, in 2019, the Homicide Review Commission reviewed about 40 cases. Of those 40 cases, about eight were solved at the table based on, on the work provided. So that's eight cases that were just solved due to information sharing ahead of time. The remainder of the cases had significant leads developed, which were presented at that table, at that meeting that we have. And it's a one hour meeting. So everyone comes prepared, they get right on task, and they give significant information to the homicide investigators to move those cases forward. Many of those other cases were solved. And that's why when you look at the 2019 numbers, that solve rate is 71, 72%, that's significant. A core component of that rate was the fact that the Homicide Review Commission is an open exchange of information for homicides, leveraging our partnerships and resources such as the Northern Ohio Violent Crime Task Force, NOLEF, Northern Ohio Law Enforcement Task Force, and all of our other partners. So just, just a little more about the mechanics of that and the fact that partnered with the NOVCC, we have an academic component which will allow us to plot and deliver some of those things in a, in a format that we can all examine. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman, did that, I, I didn't hear, what was the solve rate before we had this grant?
Right. I was given to ask that.
That we don't have, we will crunch that up for you and get it to you, no problem, sir. We just haven't gone back on. So we'll have to go back to probably 17 or so. We, we have 19 and 20. We'll get that for you.
We'd like to be for and after.
Absolutely. And I ask the question, whether or not that we have a match to this grant, you know, that's not my true concern. The concern is whether, you know, when we go out with these grants, are we, are we maximizing our potential when we go out and seek these grants? Are, are we, are we taking advantage of every tool that comes along with this? And so from your, your response that we are, and to know that we are 79% and this is, is a rolling basis and we're, we're planning for this grant again. And I really hope that, you know, these same services will be able to help us continue to solve these rates at the table and, and, and away from the table. For example, I, I still have a, a unsolved homicide in my ward. A former firefighter retired, Mr. McCormick, was gunned down in the Ford Hill Park of last year. And the communication of, you know, from the family, the family believes communication has been little to none, that they constantly have to reach out to figure out who's the new detective on the case when the detective has retired before. new detective on the case, when the detective has retired before. Who have they, I mean, who they have to interview? Any suspects that they potentially may know of? Or, or merely, you know, just a, 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 a update on, on some of the processes that they are, uh, undertaking in order to, uh, to move through any list of, uh, of, uh, of, uh, leads that they've received. None of that information from their perspective has been provided. In fact, you know, when I reached out to that department, uh, Commander, I believe now Commander Pillow, uh, uh, has been very responsive, you know, but he can't do it alone, right? You know, does this grant provides for some support for communication, some outreach, uh, individuals who can communicate better, uh, with these families? Because that is the, that is, that is one of the most hurtful things when you have experienced, uh, violence within your family or your friends or whatever the case, and you can't get a phone call back within a reasonable time? Or you simply are not being provided updates? I think that's one of the only things that, one of the, the very least things that we can do for these families when they have experienced this type of trauma, is to at least communicate with them regularly if we can. Um, how often that we can, if they've experienced this, and especially, uh, with the situation that we've had, uh, with the firefighter, again, who's retired, who was gunned down in the park there. So I, I'm concerned about, again, the level of communication and whether this grant or, or, you know, as we move along through this process, Mr. Chairman, to the Safety Chair, that we make that a priority, uh, for especially this department. We're not talking about a financial crime, right? We're not talking about a, a motor vehicle theft. We're talking about someone who has lost their life and who would never come back, never come back, that we communicate better with these families, uh, when they've experienced this type of trauma. So I hope that, you know, to the Safety Command Staff who was listening, to the Safety Director, that we make that a priority. If we can't do this with this grant and provide some sort of outreach, uh, support or communication, uh, individuals to help with communication with the department, with the families, that if it's not this grant, that we look at some way, uh, to make that a priority when moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I think that's, that's an important point is that, uh, that people are at their lowest point in their lives when these, these tragedies happen and, you know, just, uh, just a little bit of compassion, a little bit of outreach would really go a long way. So, uh, those are, uh, well, well, well-placed comments.
That's right. Sure.
Uh, first, I want to go back to Councilman, uh, Harrison, and then we'll go to the points of it. Councilman?
I mean, and, and you summed it up, that's right, because, uh, uh, all, um, Ms. Leon is not enough, right? She, she's fantastic. She does, she does what she, what she can. But we need more than her, uh, within this department to help with outreach to these, uh, individuals, community, because for anybody who's listed, who think, who don't think this is real, it's real, right? This violence in our community continues to escalate. No, we can't arrest our way out of it. But damn it, we have to do everything we can with all the resources we can, and if we, and if we don't have it, we need to find a way to, to get it done to help, you know, these communities, because we, we, it, it, it's a bad feeling when you wake up and you look at your phone and you have a, a, an email or a text from, uh, a detective or, or, uh, Sergeant, uh, uh, Chach, who is, is giving you information for a homicide or two or three that's taken place within a night span. You know, we, we, we have to, uh, we really have to find a way and a path moving forward as we, uh, start out in 2021. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, go, I'm going to go back to the list. Somebody asked for a point, but I-
Yeah, that was, that was me, uh, Boshir.
Okay, is it, do you understand the list or do you want to point out what the Councilmen's?
I want to point out quickly with the Councilmen.
John?
And I guess the, the question that I have, uh, because this is an issue that he brought up, this is very, very important, that, um, we have many families, many families. I, I had a situation in my neighborhood where, uh, actually, in, 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 uh, Councilman Conwell's neighborhood, right on the border, that there was an older gentleman, um, who was ran over, you know, in a head and run, and, uh, and, and, and was killed, and there was no follow-up with the family of what's going on, what's happening. We have a situation with Desmond Franklin, murder of Desmond Franklin, what's the follow-up? So my question is, uh, to the, uh, from the Chair to the Chief is, is there, or Chair to the, the Safety Director, is there a department or process that you're working with families that, that, that have been, uh, murdered or have died in, in some horrific way, where you're keeping up with them, where you're giving them updates? Is there, is there a, a part of the department where you're doing that?
Uh, Director?
Yeah, through the Chair.
Or Chief?
Yeah, Councilman, I, I'll answer that. Through the Chair, the Councilman, um, as, uh, Councilman, uh, Harrison pointed out, uh, Grace Leon works in our homicide unit. Uh, we're also in the process of, uh, trying to onboard another contractor to assist Grace. Um, but again, uh, homicides are, you know, of course, the most heinous crime that's committed in our society and the most difficult to investigate. Uh, our investigators have upwards of 20 homicides apiece, and it's almost impossible for those investigators and for the folks that we have assigned there to keep up with all of those over 100-plus families on a regular basis. And the, the, the sad part about it and the reality about it is, uh, Mr. Chair to the, uh, committee, is that a lot of times there is no update to give that family other than we're still working that case. And a, a lot of times, and I've been in that situation myself, families don't want to hear that. They want to hear that you have leads, that you have suspects, that you've done a lot of stuff. And on the other side of that, there's a lot of times when we can't tell the families some of the stuff we're doing, uh, because when things start to get out in the community, it really hampers the case. So it's kind of between a, a rock and a hard place on the information that we actually are able to give to a family. Um, but I, I do hear the, the, the needs of the community. We've been talking about this for a while. We've been making some strides on being able to communicate with families more often, even if it's just to tell them we're just still working on the case, not so much to give them, uh, updated information, because a lot of times there is no updated information that we can actually share at that time with the family.
Yeah, even if, even if they just had the comfort of knowing that it's being worked on, uh, Chief, I think that that would be, that would go a long way, but thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Kevin Conwell on ordinance number 94420.
I just want to make a point. Um, Councilmember Boshir Jones and, uh, Councilmember Anthony Harrison are spot on, Mr. President. Uh, Ms. McCormick, who was married to her husband for 45 years, uh, he was shot in the head in my ward, their residence, Anthony Harrison Ward, she called me, um, what day was this? Um, last week, um, Friday. The ladies was married for 45 years, her husband was a firefighter from, uh, engine number 30. And she said she had been calling and nobody calling to even check up on her with empathy. Her husband worked for the city for more than 30 years, and she caused, this lady was in tears, and I thought about, when she said 45 years, Mr. President, I've been married for 35 years, 35 years. This lady's saying when she turns over, she doesn't see her husband there. And you know what? You know what, Mr. President? She said this is the second time, and Mr. Harrison, though, we were at her house. Her, her son was murdered the same way, three years ago, on Cedar. She was married, her, her, her son was murdered the same way, and this is happening to her son, Mrs. McCormick. Uh, um, um, Councilmember Anthony Harrison, though, I cried myself, man. 45 years and you looking over and your spouse is gone and no one is showing you any empathy? That's not good. So Councilmember, um, Boshir Jones, Anthony Harrison, to that point, they're, they're spot on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could, just real quick. Yes, um, every, every homicide, every, uh, uh, victim's family, uh, is, is, uh, partnered with frontline services, uh, immediately after the homicide happens, and we encourage the family to use those services that we partner with for that agency, um, for just exactly what the Councilman is talking about. Um, you know, our detectives aren't counselors and things like that, so we give them a professional service to be able to help them through these situations, and we encourage that family to use those services. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Councilman Joe Jones, do you have comments specifically on 94420? You're muted, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
All right, on 94420?
Yes, Mr. President. I, I know it was stated earlier, uh, Mr. President, that we would come back to the Safety Committee, um, and I would just, Mr. Chairman, to, um, our Safety Chair, um, to have the Commander come and tell us how the detective systems work. Um, that would be very helpful to us, Mr., Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. President, uh, to the Chairman, um, as relates to how the fundamentals of the, of the organization operates. Um, I believe, and, and what I've been hearing so far, is that they don't have enough manpower, uh, to handle the cases that's in place, and that makes sense on the reasons why there's no communications to the family, uh, members of lost loved ones. And so we have to look at the system, Mr. President, uh, to the Chairman, to make sure that when, uh, someone is killed in the city of Cleveland, uh, we have a fundamental system in place that, uh, keeps in contact with the victims of the family. I know that sometimes, uh, my comment may annoy some of the powers that be. I don't mean to annoy you, it's not purposeful, it's trying to make a point, because I'm living this life every single day. Uh, I've enjoyed my colleague's, uh, Anthony Harrison's comments, uh, and we've gotten to a place, uh, where we hear the same dance and song about, uh, it takes all of these other factors. At the end of the day, the police department is not in my neighborhood, they're not visible enough, and they're not taking care of the needs of my community. And as an American citizen, uh, in this country, I shouldn't have to enourish the citizens in the city of Cleveland, have to live faint out of fear. And so, uh, Mr. Mr. President to, uh, Mr. Griffin, um, I look forward to working with you, not just talking about the issues, but really fundamentally creating some kind of change. And so with that, um, to the Chief, I, I know that you have a very difficult and hard job. I'm not in your seat. I don't understand what you have to go through in terms of the culture that you also inherited, uh, and what you have to deal with. Uh, but let me just say this, um, I'm willing to work with anyone in the police department and anyone to make my neighborhood safe. And so when you hear the passions on my face, it's because I'm a lifelong citizen in the city of Cleveland, I was born in my neighborhood, I still live in the city, and I'm really concerned about the, the, my well-being of my family, my friends, and all, all the citizens I represent. So when you see those passions, that means that I'm totally frustrated, and I need your assistance to make, Mr. President, feel, let me finish, I know you want to keep moving. So I just want to make sure, Mr. President, that Chief understands that I don't have any issues against him, don't want to annoy him, I just need to get production, and, um, I need production like yesterday in my neighborhood. I need our neighborhood to have police out here, doing their job and working-
Thank you. We need to stick to the ordinance, my friend. We have to stick to the ordinance here. So Chief, do you have any-
And that is on the ordinance of, of policing.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, again, Mr. Uh, Council, uh, I'm sorry, Chair to the Councilmen, uh, our folks are out there, they are working hard. Uh, I just checked with our accident investigation supervisor on the hit skip gentleman from, uh, uh, Glenville neighborhood, and he has talked to that family dozens of times. Uh, again, you know, these are hard, especially when you lose a loved one, um, but, you know, it, it, it's hard to get too deep into the investigation to give information, and it's hard to tell a family you don't have anything. Uh, so we do maintain as much contact as possible with victims' families.
Much appreciated, Chief. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilman Boshir Jones on ordinance number 9442020.
I, I just want to say that, you know, this, this topic is, is an extremely important topic, and I know that we're trying to rush through and trying to get things signed, but as you can tell, this is something that means a lot to us, it's something that means a lot to our residents. And it, it may not be, uh, uh, an issue all across the city as it is in our neighborhoods, but it needs to be some space, it needs to be some patience, there's families that are hurting, there's families that are going through this every single day. What we're bringing to the table is not just for, not just for fun. It, it, it hurts us to have to talk about this. So, you know, there needs to be some time that we're able to talk about this, we're able to express ourselves, because we're here to express the frustration of our residents, and it should not be pushed so quickly without us fully expressing what the issue is and getting the answers that we're looking for, because we're still not getting the answers that we're looking for, which is how do we make sure that we fulfill, uh, the, the, the problems that our community is going through? You know, this, this is a very sensitive thing, and it should be taken as such.
It is taken very seriously, Councilman, I appreciate that. I mean, the issue before us is to accept a grant to, so that we can better solve-
Well, that's the issue, Mr. President. The issue is that we're always accepting grants, but we're not accepting responsibility. Our residents are dying, and then we're not following up with them. So the issue is not just us not being able to, uh, solve the, solve the problem, the issue is our lack of empathy for our residents, that we should have a department that's continuously checking on them, even if we don't have anything to follow up from, follow up with them, just to let them know that we care. People are not just wanting to leave the city of Cleveland because it's violent, they want to leave the city of Cleveland because they feel like we don't care about them. And that's what this is about, and what, and what it comes across as we're talking about it, is that people don't care and you're taking it lightly. And that's, and that, and that really bothers me. I'm not speaking about you specifically, I know you have a heart for the people, I know the Chief has a heart for the people. But when we talk about this and people are watching this, they want to know that as a city, we care. That's, that's important, man.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Blaine Griffin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, um, I've sitting there patiently listen to what everybody has said. Had a four-hour safety meeting last week, had about a four-hour meeting two weeks before that. I'm frustrated. I've been doing this job for four years, I've been doing, um, being a public servant, where I've had to deal with homicides and go in the family's house and tell them that the loved one is lost, even with some of you. I understand the issues and I'm very, um, frustrated, just like many of you. It costs $100,000 to put a police officer in place. If you don't like what's going on and you want to police state, and we want to make sure that we go after these criminals because everybody is upset with how overrun we are with criminals, then I would advise everybody to sit down with me and the administration, and let's figure out how we get more officers and how we do that. I try to get a committee where we have solutions. I understand the frustration. Um, nobody in this city has a market on caring as much as all of us. All of us care about the people that we're losing in this city. I do think we need to tighten up how we communicate with people, uh, when they've lost a loved one. I happen to think that we should utilize other departments like the Community Relations Board and other folks in order to try to maintain regular communication with families when they deal with this, because we do care. And, and Councilman is right, we do need to show that we care, that we're not numb to the issue. But I want to just tell everybody with this homicide review committee, um, when we actually did something similar like this in the past, and I'll pivot to the legislation, we found out that approximately eight to 10% of the city were responsible for 67% of the homicides and the shootings in the city. I would caution everybody that intelligence-led policing is what we're trying to accomplish with things like this, when we're trying to build cases, when we're trying to do things in order to try to get an outcome that you're talking about. Now, I happen to be a Chair, and I happen to be a person, because I relate to each and every one of you that feel the frustration that you're hearing, my citizens are talking about it, your citizens are calling you about it, I empathize with everybody about your frustration. But I also think that we have a goal and we have a mission as a council to try to get outcomes and try to get a solution. That's going to take bodies, money, and resources. That's what we're trying to do right now. So I urge everybody to pass this legislation, not because we're just trying to pass it along and get it along, but because this is trying to get to some of the solutions that all of you are doing. I appreciate Councilman Harrison bringing up about how we relate to families, that's something that I would, um, I would be more than willing to try to, um, convene something with the homicide team in order to make sure that we have a more seamless process to try to accomplish that. But I just want to encourage everybody that, um, even though the public, and I want to say this to the public, I, I, you know, I'm pissed too, we're all upset, but I want you to understand something. This is a societal breakdown. This is a societal breakdown that has more to it than just trying to get a million police officers to go arrest everybody in this city. This is a societal breakdown, and until we start looking at this holistically and talk about how we're going to deal with this societal breakdown, then we're going to keep on having these problems. Now, I understand the frustration, I'm frustrated too. I hear the conversations with all of you guys and I hear from my constituents, but we need to get to the business of trying to find out how we get more resources and make sure to the administration that we get the information- and make sure to the administration that we get the information that we need to show that we're actually getting results. But I will tell my colleagues, when we did this back in 2012 and 2013, I don't like to do "back in my day" stories, but I will in this one. We found out that it was not this massive crime, this massive wave of people committing homicides, that it was relegated to a percentage of people that we knew we needed to focus on, which actually broke down to about 663 people. That's what we're trying to get to in this kind of homicide review committee. How do we try to do that? And that brings better policing, because then you don't have to worry about some of the innocent bystanders or some of the police-involved shootings and other trials and tribulations that we've gone through as a city, because we're focused on a specific population. So I encourage everybody to vote for this, and I encourage the administration to give everybody the facts that we need. I will work with Councilman Harrison and Councilman Jones and Councilman Conwell to make sure that we communicate better between the homicide unit and the families. And I would encourage the police department to use other avenues. I know that Grace Leon has been a great asset, but I would tell you that we had a pretty good team when I was there with Yvonne Pointer and a few other people, too, that was able to talk with families whenever they lost loved ones. So I understand the passion, but on this one, I really encourage everybody to pass this piece of legislation. It's probably one of the most important committees that we have in the safety to really review homicides and get to the root causes of what the challenge is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Griffin. Councilwoman Jenny Spencer?
Thank you. Through the chair to my colleagues. I wanted to just state that I am in support of this legislation, but I also wanted to take a moment to speak in solidarity. The pain and loss that you are describing is not only isolated to certain parts of the city. And when there is a homicide in any part of the city, it is deeply felt by all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Seeing no further hands, ordinance number 944-20 stands approved. We have one more for safety. Ordinance number 946-2020, Councilmember Griffin Kelly, by departmental request, an emergency ordinance authorizing Director of Public Safety to apply for and accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Public Safety for the FY 2021 Impaired Driving Enforcement Program and Selective Traffic Enforcement Programs. And the acronym is IDP-STEP. So, Director? Please unmute.
Thank you, Council President. Ordinance number 946-2020, if passed by council, will authorize me, the Director of Public Safety, to apply for and accept a $60,882.54 grant from the Ohio Department of Public Safety for fiscal year 2021 Selective Traffic Enforcement Program. That's the acronym STEP that you were referring to. And the impaired driving enforcement program grant, and that's the acronym IDEP. This legislation will provide funding for speed-related and DUI-related traffic enforcement. The goal of the IDEP and the STEP grant is to provide funding for OVI-related and speed-related traffic enforcement. The city will receive reimbursement for a police officer overtime while conducting targeted enforcement. The following are the results of this grant in 2020. Thirty-five driving under suspension arrests, 117 speed citations, 104 adult restraint citations, seatbelt citations, 32 no operator's license arrests, and 276 other citations. Expenses to be reimbursed include personnel at $58,604.01 and fuel $2,278.56, for a total of $55,546.86. The grant period is from October 1st, 2020 to September 30th, 2021. We receive this grant annually since 2008. There is no local match.
Thank you. This has been heard and recommended for passage by the Committee on Public Safety. Councilman Blaine Griffin, do you have comments on 946-2020?
No, Mr. Chair. It's been fully vetted and passed through the safety committee. I support it.
Thank you. Are there further questions, comments on ordinance number 946-2020? Councilman Kevin Conwell?
You know, Mr. President, I support that grant, but I want to say this, this comment also to my friend, Chairman Griffin. When Director Carey, who I like, this is not personal, when you tell me that you want me to pass a grant since 2008, please come and tell me what victories do we have with this grant? That's what made Councilmember Barsha Jones, Councilmember Anthony Harrison, get into uproar. We're passing grants, but you're not telling us any victories, any wins, any milestones. We're just sitting here like Councilmember Barsha Jones said, yes, I'll pass this grant. It sounds good. Sounds good means nothing to me. Sounds good, and I heard Chairman Blaine Griffin, when he narrated, he's definitely correct. However, what we're arguing about is the milestones. Since 2008, we had this grant. Director Carey narrated to us, but he never, ever told us how it benefited for the milestones, the traffic stops, how traffic stops can prevent crime, because we can get guns off the streets and things like that, and I yield.
Thanks, Councilman. Director, do you have any response to Chief?
I do. Council President, I did. I went through the activities that this grant supported in 2020, addressing the driving under suspensions, the citations, the seatbelt citations, the license arrests, the other citations. I did give that data. Traffic stops are important to public safety with is a feeling within the community that they don't, that the police aren't effective. Police are very effective. What everyone has to keep in mind is that police are called to scenes after crimes have been committed. They collect traffic stops after infractions have been had. And Chairman Griffin is actually right. We have a societal breakdown that a holistic approach has to be had in order to address it. Policing, again, coming on after crimes have been committed is one thing, and it does serve as a deterrent. But there are other things that we have to do. We have to address systemic racism. We have to address economic development. We have to have proper programming. We have to have proper youth programming. We have to have resources available for victims and for those going through difficult times, such as financial or mental health issues. This holistic approach will properly address crime. The stats that I did give, to get back to Councilman's question, those are milestones. These, the 35 driving under suspension arrests. You have folks who are driving without license, who don't have insurance. Those folks, you know, we discover warrants for arrest during these traffic stops. We've had 117 speeding citations as a result of this grant. And that's a direct address to the community notifying the Cleveland Police Division of Police that people are speeding down their street. And we've increased enforcement in targeted areas where we've received those calls. Seatbelts, 104 citations of seatbelts. With the amount of car accidents that we have had with folks in the city, these seatbelts save lives. So these 104 traffic citations that we have encourages people to wear those seatbelts. Thirty-two citations for no operator's license. Same thing as what I said with the driving under suspension. Folks who don't have a license when they drive, they likely don't have insurance, and they likely have other issues with the law. And these traffic stops discover those. And we've had 276 other citations. So, you know, we work to come with the statistics and the data that support the legislation. And this legislation, this year and the other legislation that we've all addressed, is so that we can have tools to effectively address crime in the city. But it is a holistic approach that is needed, Councilman.
Thank you. Councilman Conwell?
You know, you know, Mr. President, I understand a holistic approach. I know people in my ward are speeding on Wade Park. We have a meeting about that tonight. People are speeding on 105, and I thank the mayor for the Streetscape project on East 105th Street. People are speeding on these side streets. So we see as councilmembers, we're walking the streets, Mr. President. You're a councilmember also, so you hear the numbers, but you see the speeding on your streets, and you're calling the police. And so we don't see, we don't see it. I'm not upset with you, Director Howard, but here's another thing. With me, I know it's a holistic approach. I've sponsored at least five job fairs with the police to recruit, and I went to safety forces at Glenville High School to help people with jobs and to recruit them. I've sponsored at least, in my lifetime, at least 60 to 70 job fairs, Mr. President. At least 60 to 70 job fairs to try to put people to work. So I understand that what you're talking about. The focus is you giving us an evaluation process. You're giving us, and you're telling us the reason why. I like that last one you just narrated to me. But that need to be a continuing process of telling us why we're passing these grants and how it benefits our residents, our taxpayers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Joe Jones on ordinance number 946-2020 on accepting this grant. Councilman?
Mr. President, 10 seconds, and then I'll have the screen on. Mr. President, to my colleagues and to the safety chairman, thank you for coming back with the information that we had initially requested. By neglect, what was the production of some of these grants? And, you know, and I hear what your comments were, and I also heard these comments by my chairman, Mr. Griffin, about the social ills of our society. And I've also heard the chief say these, and I've heard often police say that. And I know that we have a lot of issues and a lot of those type of scenarios. And let me just share this with you. I've said on the budget hearing since I've been on council, when we compare production, and see, and this is what it basically boils down to work. And we know how many tickets were written and how that production of ticket writing and traffic enforcement has extremely went down in the city of Cleveland. And when you talk about the numbers you're giving us right now, there was a time when we were at 90, and I'm quite sure Mike Lindsey could attest to those numbers, where we were making over 80, 90,000, we were pulling 80, 90,000 cars over and writing tickets for violations. And now I think those numbers are in maybe 30,000 maybe now, or less, or if any this year. So people commit crime where they know they can get away with that crime. And they're committing that crime in the city of Cleveland because they know they can get away with it. And what are the telltale signs of that? Is that when you can go and drop entire truckloads of debris in the neighborhood, knowing that you have no sense that no one's going to come and get you, that there's no police out there that's going to pull you over and say, hey, you've done illegal dumping. As fast as I, Mr. President, can get illegal dumping up in one side of the neighborhood, there are illegal dumping in the other side. So I hear all this societal stuff. To me, it's a bunch of excuses. I know that we have those issues, but first let's get it right with policing. And right now, we haven't done a good job. And people come into this city, and they do what they want to do in this city, and they don't get caught for it, and they're not prosecuted for it. And that's the reasons why we have the epic level of crime that's happening in our communities. And I've shared this example time and time again. We border against Shaker Heights. Everybody who's, anybody who's ever driven down Lee Road knows that when you move from Lee Road, from the city of Cleveland, over to Shaker, you stop right away. You slow down. Why? Because there's a fear factor that the police is going to get you. If that fear factor is out there in our neighborhoods, we wouldn't be hearing all these shots and living this life the way we're living it. I live in this neighborhood. There are those who work for us who do not live in this neighborhood. People come because I'm an elected official, Mr. Howard, and they knock on my door. And they want to have assistance and help. So I'm pleading with those who are listening, let's get our production numbers up. Let's get back to the work of more of offensive, so we're not so defensive as a police department. And let's improve our investigations. And let's start to making sure we put the fear in those people who want to come over in our city and break the law, that they're going to be caught. And so with that, I appreciate your production numbers. And I would ask, Mr. Chairman, to the chief ahead of time, that as it relates to these numbers in terms of traffic enforcement, I would like to know, if all possible, what our numbers look like this year.
Thank you, Councilman. And Director Howard had provided those, and I'll ask him to provide them in writing to all the council. Councilman Anthony Brancatelli on ordinance number 946-2020?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I want to thank Director Howard and Chief Williams for bringing this legislation forward. The STEP program is very important in our communities. Both Councilman McCormick and I were at Commander Todd's Community Relations Meeting last night. And speeding was one of the issues that got brought up a number of times. We're pretty blessed that, I'm pretty blessed that I have Commander Todd, Cuts and Staco, who do these virtual meetings. And certainly, one of the issues that the commanders have been facing is not being able to meet with our block clubs, not meeting with our residents face-to-face. They continue to tell us how important that is in policing. And certainly, as we get through this pandemic, and we talk about crime numbers and those types of issues, we look forward to those numbers going down as our police officers engage face-to-face, come to our block clubs, come to our civic groups, and take those complaints head-on. But the virtual meetings have been great. Commander Todd was wonderful yesterday, so thank you for having them available to us as we can exchange that information. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Beshear Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple things from what I heard the safety director say. So Chair to the safety director, you know, as we saw in this past situation at the Capitol, we found that there were a lot of police officers, off-duty officers, who were also a part of that insurrection. And I couldn't help but to be very nervous at the fact that, you know, we had a ton of people from Cleveland who not only attended this insurrection, but also broke the laws and went inside the building. I'm not saying they were from Cleveland. I'm saying that there were some people that were from Ohio that were a part of that and who had been charged. So there's a concern that I have with, is it, do we have these type of individuals who are traveling in our community? And you talked about structural racism and having a holistic approach. So the first question that I have is, when you talk about the parking enforcement and how we are finding out that there's crimes that are being committed, I would like to see the numbers of the parking enforcement and the arrests compared to broken down by neighborhoods. Where are these people from? Where is the parking enforcement taking place at? Is it taking place more in War I? Is it taking place more in War 17? Is it taking place more in War 12 or War VII? I'd like to see the breakdown of where you guys, matter of fact, Chair to the director, do you have that information of where the most arrests are taking place?
Director?
I'm sorry, Council President, Councilman, the president, are you talking about the number of traffic citations?
Traffic enforcement. Where is your traffic enforcement taking place? Where is, where are you having the most arrests take place at in the city?
So with every traffic citation, there's not an arrest with every traffic citation, especially within, with our, within the COVID situation, arrests have been kind of been curbed to an extent to address the most serious offenses. I believe that the breakdown with regard to the traffic citations is within the documentation that we provided after the retreat that Chairman Griffin had requested. We can go back through that and look to see what that breakdown, if that breakdown is in there. And if it's not, we can get that to council.
Do you have a, Chair to the director, do you have even just an idea of where that is happening most at?
So I don't, I don't want to provide speculation. I'd rather have, you know, provide figures that are as close to it, because if I guess off the top of my head, and those numbers don't match, I don't want to be wrong. I like to get the accurate data to council.
Would you, would you, would you, I know you don't want to guess. Would you, would you suggest that most of those traffic citations are coming from the east side of Cleveland?
That, that would be speculation. I can tell you that the majority of our homicides are on the east side of Cleveland. And I can also tell you that we have a, you know, a traffic commissioner and a traffic enforcement team that will go where needed, you know, with targeted enforcement, once we get those requests. And many of those requests are within the 4th, 5th district, 3rd district as well, with the requests that we get for excessive speeding, running of stop signs. That's where we get the majority of our calls from.
Awesome. Chair to the director, when you talked about the holistic approach, do you? Awesome. Chair to the director, when you talk about the holistic approach, do you, do you feel that you have the necessary tools to apply a holistic approach to the crime? Because when you just said that most of the homicides are taking place on the east side, we, we understand that, uh, homicide or murder or even crime doesn't just come in the form of bullets entering bodies, but it's also a crime that if we have officers who are on the force, uh, who, uh, who can relate to the Proud Boys and relate to other, uh, white nationalist terrorists that's in this country, um, that's a, that's a crime as well. It's a crime that we on the east side, you know, are experiencing a food desert like very few other places in the country. Those are also crimes. So we understand that things are not just in a, in a bubble, that, that, that what we're dealing with on the east side and the west side has, is, 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 is this other, uh, this other thing that's within that pot that, that make things what they are. So do you feel that you have enough support, enough resources, um, from the administration to apply this holistic approach that you, that you talked about?
Well, the holistic approach is beyond, is beyond public safety. Um, but to, to answer your question, I do. Um, some of the changes that we are making with regard to, um, being more selective of who we allow to put on the uniform as we're instituting behavioral-based interviews, we are looking at our, uh, our, our psych, um, uh, analysis of, of individuals who apply. Uh, we are, uh, holding officers accountable through our, through the appropriate discipline. We're doing things in a very twenty-first century and more modern, uh, approach, uh, and looking at when people apply, is this a right fit for not just being a police officer, but being a police officer in a, in an urban setting? And that's, uh, again, going through reevaluating the psych analysis of folks who apply behavioral-based interview, um, and, and, and discipline in the form of accountability.
All right. Thank you so much. Uh, to the, Mr. President, you know, I finally understand, I didn't get in, in the beginning year, why Councilman Conwell was so focused on outcome measures. I mean, he would say it every single meeting, to the point where I was like, why is he doing that? But I get it now. I finally get it that when we have these conversations and to Mr. President, to the Chair of Safety, uh, Councilman Griffin, is I would, I would like to know what has been achieved, what has been achieved? I mean, maybe things have been achieved, and maybe we just do a terrible job of, of, of expressing it. But Safety Director Howard has been in his position for, what, almost half a year now? Chair to the director? I'm sure that you've achieved something. Like, I'm sure that you have accomplished something. But it's like a lot of like speculative, you know, we did this, we, but there's like, we, there's nothing that we can come back and say, hey, and I'm sure you have, can you, can you show us, um, what has been accomplished under your leadership since you got into all? What have you, what have you accomplished? I'm sure there's something there. But give us something substantial. And you don't have to do it right now, but maybe at the next meeting that we can talk about what you have accomplished under, uh, what, what has been accomplished with you in that position?
So. I'm sure, Director, if you want to answer, but I, you know, I think that that's a, it's a pretty broad topic for, that, that spans a lot. And it's, you know, we're not going to talk about his personnel file. But if you'd like to respond, and then we can take
It doesn't have to respond. The point is, Mr. President, is that when people come to the table, what we would like to see is what, what is working and what isn't working. We don't really know what's working and what's not working. So the next meeting, the next safety meeting that Chairman Griffin has and Safety Director is there, if he can bring what has been accomplished from the grants, what has been accomplished under his leadership. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Brian Casey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Chairman, to the Safety Director or even, uh, Chairman Griffin, uh, when we run these special initiatives like this, does anybody do any follow-up? Um, I know that we talked about a holistic approach, but does anybody follow up with Cleveland Municipal Court or Cuyahoga County, um, Common Police Court to see, um, what the outcomes of these cases are? For example, if we're running an initiative, you know, with the DUI checkpoint or for, where you're spending this grant, you know, doing speeding or whatever, is there any follow-up to see, um, or does the court know that this is part of a special initiative, um, so that they're on board with it as well?
I'll start out with the Safety Director. I will tell you that, and, um, once again, please, I apologize, uh, back in my day conversation, but I know when we've had these grants in the past, that there was conversations with the courts because some of the judges did have concerns if we were specifically targeting some east side predominantly African-American neighborhoods. And one of the things that, uh, had to be defined was, um, you know, these are where we were getting the complaints from. This is where the accidents did it. So, so there was some justification and working with the courts. And at least I know in the past, uh, when former Safety Director Mike McGrath and myself used to go and meet with, uh, the judges, that we did address some of those concerns. But to your point, one of the things that I think is a neighborhood-based outcome, and I think some neighborhoods do it better than others, are court watches. And I'm not sure, um, if there's been an active court watch to actually see the outcomes of those cases. So you bring up a good point, Councilman, to, uh, through the chair.
Thank you. Any further, Councilman Casey?
Safety Director, I believe, needed to, uh,
I'm sorry, Safety Director?
So, you know, um, you know, I'm a career prosecutor, and I, and I've been in the courts. And I can tell you that, you know, the prosecutor's offices, uh, both city and county take, uh, all the cases that come in front of them very, very seriously. Um, we can work with the courts to gather the data with the, with regard to the, uh, the number of DUI convictions, uh, the number of, um, of arrests. Uh, we can get statistics from the court that, um, show the fruit of, um, of the, of the good police work that is being done. Uh, so that's something that we can, we can work to get and, and to bring to the, to the table, perhaps even bring, um,
Director, you froze up your very last phrase.
Oh, I was saying that we can also, um, see if we can bring the, the, you know, Chief Prosecutor for the city to the, to a safety committee meeting to, to discuss the, the efforts of, of her office, uh, with regard to the statistics and data of, of from the courts that show the fruit of what, uh, what, what the police, what the police, police officers, boots on the ground, uh, work, uh, brings in front of the judges.
All right. And, and I only ask that, Mr. Mr., uh, uh, Council President and the Safety Director, um, because when we first started, you know, in another life, when we were doing curfew sweeps, you know, um, you know, we would arrest all these kids and, um, we would turn around and at the beginning, you know, the tickets were being thrown out, right? It wasn't until we engaged the court system that we were able to come up with the diversion program and everything. Um, so I just, you know, want to make sure that, you know, uh, as this holistic approach that the court system is on, is on board with this as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Real briefly, Director. Director, you're frozen again.
Just, can you hear me? Just briefly, to Councilman Casey's point, is that, um, members of CPD and the, and the prosecutor's office have met several times just during this, this, this six months that I, that I've been here. So there, there is increased conversation between CPD and the prosecutor's office.
Great. Thank you. If there is nothing further, ordinance number nine forty-six twenty twenty stands approved. Thank you very much. Is Director Collier on the line? Is Assistant Director Kane on the line?
Yes. Good morning, Council President.
Director, how are you?
I'm doing well. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to public utilities, and we will push, uh, planning back, uh, toward done with, with, uh, public utilities. All right. So we've got a, a good number of ordinance. All of these ordinance have been heard and recommended for passage by the Committee on Public Utilities just this week. I'm going to begin with ordinance number nine thirty-seven twenty twenty. Now, ordinance number nine thirty-seven twenty twenty, council members Casey and Kelly by departmental request, an emergency ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Utilities to enter into one or more agreements with Cuyahoga County to design, reconstruct, and attach a new trunk main to the new Hilliard Road Bridge over Rocky River as part of the county's bridge reconstruction project, and to provide a prepayment to reimburse the county for the city share of the improvement. Estimated cost one point three million. Director?
Thank you, uh, Council President. Members of council, in nineteen ninety-four, Cleveland Water installed a thirty-six inch main over the Hilliard Road Bridge over the Rocky River to create an interconnection between Morgan and Crown. The county has determined that the bridge has deteriorated and plans to rebuild the bridge starting in twenty twenty-three with detailed design starting in twenty twenty-one. The county has indicated it's willing to design and construct the replacement main on the bridge under its contracts, provided that we at Cleveland Water reimburse all reasonable costs. This approach will save water, um, costs and prevent many coordination issues with multiple contractors. Again, critical redundancy between Morgan and Crown, approximate cost one point three million dollars. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Director. This has been heard, recommended for passage by the Committee on Utilities. Chairman Brian Casey, anything further on nine thirty-seven?
No.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from our colleagues on nine thirty-seven twenty twenty? Hearing on ordinance number nine thirty-seven twenty twenty stands approved. Ordinance number nine fifty-five twenty twenty, council members Casey and Kelly by departmental request, an emergency ordinance determining the method of making the public improvement of rehabilitating automated control systems at Division of Water Treatment Plants, secondary facilities, and the distrib, in the distribution center, and authorizing Director of Public Utilities to enter into one more public improvement contract for the making of the improvement. Director?
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Four water treatment plants, twelve secondary pump stations, each treat, each treatment plant monitors and controls over twenty thousand individual points. Uh, the need to adapt to changing lake conditions and new regulation also warrants updates rehabilitation and retooling of our instrumentation and control systems. Each of these individual plant, plant processes are, speak back to the central control, but also can work autonomously on their own. So the continuous upgrade in rehabilitation is critical. Approximate cost, three million dollars. Estimated duration, three years. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Director. And this has also been, ordinance number nine fifty-five was heard this week by the Committee on Public Utilities. Chairman Brian Casey, anything further on nine fifty-five twenty?
No, duly vetted, approved, and recommended for passage by the Utilities Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Casey. Anything further on nine fifty-five twenty? Seeing no hands, ordinance number nine fifty-five twenty stands approved. Ordnance number nine fifty-six twenty twenty, council members Casey and Kelly by departmental request, an emergency ordinance determining the method of making the public improvement of replacing pump discharge control valves and appurtenances at the Fairmont Pump Station, and authorizing Director of Public Utilities to enter into one or more public improvement contracts for the making of the improvement. Director?
Thank you, Chairman. Every large pump in Cleveland Water, uh, has a specialized control valve immediately downstream, uh, designed to carefully control the rate of flow through the pump during the critical startup and shutdown phases of pump operation. Control valves on some of the pumps at the Fairmont Pump Station are nearing the end of their useful life and warrants replacement. Um, this would include replacement of pump discharge control valves and their associated hydraulic cylinders, electronics, and controls on approximately six pumps at Fairmont. Approximate cost, nine hundred thousand dollars. Expected to take one year. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Director. Ordinance number nine fifty-six was heard and recommended by Committee on Utilities. Uh, Councilman Brian Casey on nine fifty-six?
Duly vetted and recommended for approval.
Further questions, comments on nine fifty-six twenty twenty? Hearing on ordinance number nine fifty-six twenty twenty stands approved. Ordnance number nine fifty-seven twenty twenty, council members Casey and Kelly by departmental request, an emergency ordinance authorizing the purchase by one or more requirement contracts of landscape materials, supplies, and services, including labor and materials needed to maintain, test, install, replace, improve, restore, and refurbish landscaping and tree lawns located in city-owned or leased public utility facilities and city right-of-ways for Division of Water, Water Pushing Control, and Cleveland Public Power, and the Office of Radio Communications, Department of Public Utilities, for a period of two years. Director?
Thank you, Chairman. Um, above and beyond the regular routine maintenance, uh, of the landscaping at all the various DPU facilities, this also includes that tree lawn restoration after our crews are out there and in some way harm, uh, the private property or the tree lawns. Also soil testing and preparation, a lot of our facilities, as was heard previously in the legislation, the, the, the points that we check in the water system, a lot of these holding tanks are underneath grass. That grass, that soil needs to be tested regularly so we make sure that nothing gets washed through by rain into the holding tanks that would in any way affect our, the quality of our water and system, and also the maintaining, repairing, and installing of our rain gardens and bio swells. I think council is very familiar with the costs associated with that. Um, and anticipated cost, as you outlined, is approximately six hundred thousand dollars a year. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Ordnance number nine fifty-seven has been heard and approved. Councilman Brian Casey?
Duly vetted by the Utilities Committee and recommended for passage.
Further questions, comments on nine fifty-seven twenty twenty? Ordnance number nine twenty twenty-one, the first twenty twenty-one ordinance we read. Uh, council members Casey and Kelly by departmental request, an emergency ordinance determining the method of making the public improvement of renovating and replacing four secondary pump stations, and authorizing Director of Public Utilities to enter into one or more improvement contracts for the making of the improvement. Director?
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, Cleveland Water recently completed a focused review of its secondary booster pump stations and has programmed some improvements to those stations into the capital program, including Engle Pump Station in Middleburg Heights, Green Pump Station in Highland Hills, Shepherd Pump in, in Macedonia, and also full replacement of the Independence Pump Station in Independence. Anticipated cost is fifteen point five million dollars. Upfront cost to Cleveland Water will be ten point five million dollars. Each site would take approximately two years to complete. Uh, but of course, they would be done simultaneously for hopefully complete replacement refurbishment within four years.
Thank you. Ordnance number nine twenty-one has been heard, recommended for passage. Anything further on nine twenty-one, Councilman Brian Casey?
No, duly vetted and recommended for passage.
Thank you. Ordnance number ten twenty twenty-one, council members Casey and Kelly by departmental request, an emergency ordinance determining the method of making the public improvement of renewing a transmission main, including valves and related appurtenances underneath the Cuyahoga River near Harvard Avenue, and authorizing Director of Public Utilities to enter into one or more public improvement contracts for the making of the improvement. Director?
Thank you, Chairman. There are two large transmission mains that cross the Cuyahoga River that connect the east side portion of the water system to the west side portion. Though one is the near the Harvard Denison Bridge, and the other is near East Seventy-first Street in Cuyahoga Heights. These crossings, these crossing mains help provide a high degree of reliability to the distribution system. Uh, iron and steel, steel pipe subject to corrosion and other modes of failure. The forty-two inch Harvard River Crossing, installed in nineteen twenty-five, has failed and needs to be renewed. Repair is difficult because it is underneath the river. Um, so we would go out to bid. Anticipated cost is eight point five million dollars and, and anticipated to take two years. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Director. Um, this has been heard and recommended for passage by the Committee on Utilities. Councilman Brian Casey, anything further on ten twenty-one?
Duly vetted and, uh, approved by Utilities Committee.
Thank you, Councilman. Ordnance number, I'm sorry, seeing no hands, ordinance number ten twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one stands approved. Ordnance number eleven twenty twenty-one, council members Casey and Kelly by departmental request, an emergency ordinance determining the method of making the public improvement of repairing, of repairing roofs, appurtenances, including not limited roofing systems for the Division of Water, Department of Public Utilities, authorizing Director to enter into one or more public improvement contracts for the making of the improvement, and authorizing the purchase by one or more requirement contracts of labor and materials necessary to maintain, test, evaluate, repair, and replace roofs and appurtenances included but not limited to roofing systems and ver, for the various divisions of public utilities for a period of two years. Director?
Thank you, Chairman. Members of the committee, or council, Department of Utilities is requesting legislation to enter into requirement and public improvement contracts for the purchase of labor and materials to test, evaluate, maintain, and repair roofs and appurtenances, including but not limited to inspection supplies, repairing, and testing on an as-needed basis. Anticipated to cost between the three divisions for two years, eight million dollars. Um, obviously, being a mix of requirement contracts and public improvement contracts is important. When we have a fix, we need to fix it, or when we have a leak, we need to fix it immediately. We also need to continually monitor the roofs throughout DPU to identify the useful life remaining and then prepare for and/or fix accordingly. Um, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Director. I think we all understand the importance of a, of a solid roof and everything below it. Uh, ordinance number eleven twenty-one has been recommended, heard and recommended for passage by Committee on Utilities. Councilman Chairman Brian Casey, anything further on eleven twenty-one?
Just that the, uh, DPU has agreed to keep us, uh, abreast of the situation whenever they come across the problems when it comes to the expenditure of, uh, this ordinance.
Great. Thank you.
Also been approved and recommended for passage.
Thank you. Seeing no hands, no further questions. Ordnance number eleven twenty twenty-one stands approved. Ordnance number twelve twenty twenty-one, council members Casey and Kelly by departmental request, an emergency ordinance authorizing to be purchased by one or more requirement contracts of concrete pipe adapters, repair saddles, and accessories for the Division of Water, Department of Public Utilities, for a term of two years. Director?
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, members of council, approximately forty percent of Cleveland Water's four hundred miles of trunk mains are concrete pipe. Concrete mains have been installed since the Concrete mains have been installed since the 50s, and the number of manufacturers of this pipe and the related material needed to repair them is relatively small and specialized. So, a requirement contract has been an essential means to ensure that the materials are available when emergency pipe repairs are needed. Anticipated to cost approximately $100,000 a year. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. This has been heard and recommended for, ordinance number 1221 has been heard and recommended for approval, or excuse me, recommended for passage by Committee on Utilities. Councilman Brian Casey?
Duly vetted and approved by Utilities Committee, Mr. Chairman.
Seeing no hands. Orders number 1221 stands approved. Orders number 1321. Councilmembers Casey and Kelly by departmental request. An emergency ordinance authorizing the purchase by one or more requirements contracts of labor and materials necessary to repair and maintain the decorative and special lighting for the city bridges and the, and the Wyland Whale mural park on North Marginal Road, including materials, equipment, appurtenances, services, and insurance for the Division of Cleveland Public Power, Department of Public Utilities, for a period of two years with two one-year options to renew, the first of which requires additional legislative authority. Director?
Thank you, Chairman. Labor and material needed to maintain the decorative and special lighting for Flats area bridges, including Main, Willow, Center, Eagle, Vascular 1 and 2, and the Conrail Bridge, and also the Wyland Whale wall on the North Marginal, obviously specialized lighting, requiring specialized instruments, tools, materials, and the contract is estimated to cost approximately $500,000 from CPP's operating budget. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Director. And again, this, we heard this week at the Committee on Utilities, which recommended approval. Councilman Brian Casey, anything further on, or it's number 13-2021?
Nope, duly heard and recommended for passage.
Thank you. Orders number 1321 stands approved. Orders number 14-2021. Councilmembers Casey and Kelly by departmental request. An emergency ordinance authorizing Director of Public Utilities to make alterations and modifications to contract number PI-2019-4 with Terrace Construction, Inc., for constructing the East 85th Street and Chester Parkway area sewer project, and authorizing Director to apply for and accept funding from the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District for community cost share program funding to implement this ordinance. Director?
Thank you, Chairman. Council previously gave authority to go out and seek bids to replace approximately 650 linear feet of combined 18-inch main sewer on East 85th Street and Jack and Boar, approximately 900 linear feet of 36-inch combined on Chester Parkway. Total anticipated price and contractual price was $3.6 million. During the performance of the project, the vendor encountered differing ground conditions and groundwater issues, which stopped the installation of the conventional Jack and Boar. And then, Jack and Boar, the 54-inch casing for a new 27-inch sewer. There were three deep wells around the Boar pit that were dug to try to de-water. They deemed they resulted, the results were unsuccessful. Therefore, it was determined that the open cut excavation had to happen on 85th and Chester Parkway. This resulted in an increased cost of approximately $1.2 million to complete the project. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. This has been heard, recommended for passage by Committee on Utilities. Councilman Brian Casey, Chairman of the Committee. Do you have anything further on 14-2021?
Duly vetted and recommended for passage. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no hands. Orders number 14-2021 stands approved. Director, I believe that's everything we have from Public Utilities. Is that your?
That's my understanding. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Is Director Collier with us? I'm going to hear ordinance number nine, excuse me, 83920, because I think it's important, even in his absence, and if there's a problem, we can double back on it, but it's, I believe this is time sensitive. Orders number 8392020. Councilmembers Branca Telly, Kelly McCormick, Bashir Jones Griffin, and Zone, an emergency ordinance to amend Section 1 of Orders Number 83220 passed October 21, 2020, to extend the date of a temporary expansion area program from June 2021 until November 1, 2021, for continued use of parking lots, streets, and other public rights of way, including on-street parking areas and parklets as outdoor restaurants. If you recall, we passed this at the end of last year, actually in October of last year, to allow restaurants to bump out into the, their parking lots, public right-of-way sidewalks, so that they could have outdoor dining. This just extends the date. So, we're going to extend it from June until November. And this has been heard, and this was, this has had a hearing, and it has been approved for passage, or recommended for passage by the Committee on Development Planning Sustainability. Councilman Tony Branca Telly, anything further on 83920?
First, it's a great day for democracy, and second, yes, thoroughly viewed and reviewed and supported by DPS. An important piece, and it's going to help lead to a stronger direction in how we view our outdoor spaces. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And we had talked about doing this when we passed the initial, the initial ordinance. Is there anything further on 839? Seeing no hands. 839-2020 stands approved. Madam Clerk, did I miss anything? Anybody? By my count, I have read everything that is under consideration. We'll therefore take a break. Because the inauguration's on, why don't we take 30 minutes and reconvene at 12:30 for the council meeting? So, everybody keep your screens, turn your, your cameras off, but just keep this page, and we'll reconvene at 12:30 with the new president.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Bye.
Hey, Pat Brett.
Hey, Joe Jones.
You look so distinguished.
I think that's the, a word that you mean old.
No, 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 no. You don't, you don't look old, but you got that pretty smile. And, and you should run for, you should be the Vice President of the United States.
We are still live on YouTube.
Yes.
We're still live on YouTube.
Yeah, that's okay. We're just being nice. We won't say nothing crazy, so I appreciate you for letting us know that. It's one of the things I've learned in Politics 101. Always talk as if the mic is always live.
Yep.
So, we do a lot of-
Fred Collier, are you on?
Fred Collier? I don't think so.
Okay. All right.
I'm so, I'm so happy that, you know, we are hopefully going to get a handle on this, this epic pandemic that's going on in our nation. And I'm still praying that the new administration comes in here and really help our people, because a lot of people have, have died just right around me here recently. The two older couple was in their home. Their grandson had got the, the COVID virus and spread it to them and their daughter. The daughter passed away. The daughter passed away and the mother passed away. And both the grandson now and the grandfather are in intensive care in the hospital fighting for their lives.
I know, it's really sad.
And then I'm equally disturbed, you know, at the fact that we have failed as a country not only to lead the nation on this epic this epidemic, but to to be the worst nation on the planet with the the spread rapidly moving throughout our entire population and with new mutant strands because mutant strands only come about when they're going through animals. Animals get get it, it changes, it comes back into the human to humans and then you have a new new virus. Now that's what was explained to me, I'm not sure about all the science of it. But, you know, I'm really terrified about the coronavirus, one, two, three, four, part five and part six that could potentially hit us.
Yeah.
So we just as a nation and as a people, we need to get on our knees and we need to pray to our God to help heal our nation and our land.
Well, I think we can finally start that now with this new administration.
I'm praying and hoping so, and I hope that the dark evil wicked forces that exist don't stop the progress of of our country moving forward in a way which is in the best interest of all of America.
Hold on, let me go grab my script.
Alright, no worries.
All right. Well, it was fun to watch. Madam Clerk, we have thirteen right now?
Yes.
Great. All right, well, let's get started. Going to the council meeting Wednesday, January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Madam Clerk, will you please call a roll? And members, please unmute yourselves for this portion.
Kelly.
Here.
Bishop.
Here.
Branca Telly. Cleveland.
Here.
Conwell. Griffin.
Here.
Hairston.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Bashir Jones.
Here.
Joe Jones. Casey.
Present.
McCormack. Mooney.
Here.
Polensick.
Present.
Santana.
Present.
Sly.
Present.
Spencer.
Present.
You have a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. This council meeting is being held, I'm sorry, on this great day in our democracy. Will everybody please pause for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Now, this council meeting is being held during the COVID-nineteen emergency declaration and is being conducted as a virtual meeting in accordance with Ohio's open meeting laws as amended by House Bill four oh four. Council forty-nine requiring the attendance of the mayor and directors. All departments will be waived in compliance with the charter and rules of council. A copy of all legislation to be heard during this council meeting was furnished previous to the meeting to every council members through their council email. It is hereby acknowledged without objection that all council members have received this legislation. Further, council members must be visibly present for all votes. If they're not present, your vote will not be counted. Madam Clerk, please dispense with the journal.
By Councilmember Johnson, that the reading of the minutes of the last meeting be dispensed with the journal approved, seconded by Councilmember Casey.
Communications.
File number twenty-nine dash twenty-twenty-one, transfer of license application at five hundred West St. Clair Avenue, Ward three. File number thirty, twenty-twenty-one, new license application at five hundred West St. Clair Avenue, Ward three. File number thirty-one, twenty-one, transfer of ownership application at twenty-three ninety-one dash ninety-nine, West Eleventh Street, Ward three. File number thirty-two, twenty-twenty-one, economic development transfer application at twenty-fifty-eight West Twenty-Fifth Street, Ward three. File number thirty-three dash twenty-twenty-one, transfer of ownership application at seventy-five fifteen Kinsman Avenue, Ward five. File number thirty-four, twenty-twenty-one, transfer of ownership application at forty-seven oh one, Storer Avenue, Ward fourteen. File number thirty-five, twenty-twenty-one, transfer of license application at thirty-one eighty-two West Twenty-Fifth Street, Ward fourteen. File number thirty-six, twenty-twenty-one, transfer of ownership application at ninety-eight fifteen Madison Avenue, Ward fifteen. File number thirty-seven, twenty-twenty-one, transfer of license application at one thirty-six oh one Lorraine Avenue, Ward sixteen. File number thirty-eight, twenty-twenty-one, transfer of ownership application at one twenty-five twenty-four Lorraine Avenue, Ward sixteen. File number thirty-nine, twenty-twenty-one, transfer of license application at one seventy-one nineteen Lorraine Avenue, Ward seventeen.
First reading emergency ordinances to be referred for administrative and committee review.
Ordinance forty dash twenty-twenty-one by Councilmember Kelly by departmental request, an emergency ordinance to amend section fifty-one of ordinance three twenty-three fifteen as amended relating to compensation for various classifications. Ordinance forty-one, twenty-twenty-one by council members Branca Telly and Kelly by departmental request, an emergency ordinance authorizing the Director of Economic Development to enter into a job creation incentive program grant agreement with Quicken Loans or its designee to facilitate the purpose and provisions of this ordinance. Ordinance forty-two dash twenty-twenty-one by Councilmember Kelly by departmental request, an emergency ordinance authorizing the Director of Finance to pay as moral claims the sum opposite the name of the claimants. Ordinance forty-three dash twenty-twenty-one by council members Johnson, Branca Telly, and Kelly by departmental request, an emergency ordinance to repeal ordinance two oh one dash twenty-nineteen relating to the exchange of lands with the Cleveland Metropolitan School District for future redevelopment and to authorize the Director of Community Development to enter into one or more agreements with the Board of Education of the Cleveland Metropolitan School District for the exchange of lands for future redevelopment and the mutual benefit of the parties and authorizing the commissioner purchases and supplies to acquire and to convey the properties to the Cleveland Metropolitan Housing Authority for future redevelopment.
First reading emergency notices to be passed.
Ordinance forty-four dash twenty-twenty-one by Councilmember Joe Jones, an emergency ordinance amending section two of ordinance nine eighty-two twenty-twenty as it pertains to authorizing the Director of the Department of Community Development to enter into agreement with Famicos Foundation for the Holiday Food Gift Program through the use of wards one, two, seven, nine, ten, and fourteen casino revenue funds. Ordinance forty-five dash twenty-twenty-one by Councilmember Cleveland, an emergency ordinance amending the title and sections one and two of ordinance four thirteen twenty-twenty as it pertains to authorizing the Director of the Department of Community Development to enter into agreement with Cleveland Restoration Society for the Heritage Home Program through the use of wards three, five, seven, and thirteen casino revenue funds. Ordinance forty-six dash twenty-twenty-one by Councilmember Mooney, an emergency ordinance amending section two of ordinance four twenty dash twenty-twenty as it pertains to authorizing the Director of the Department of Community Development to enter into agreement with West Town Community Development Corporation for the West Town CDC Code Enforcement Program through the use of Ward eleven casino revenue funds.
Read the motion to suspend the rules.
Councilmember Johnson, that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage, seconded by Councilmember Casey.
Please call the roll.
Kelly, Bishop, Branca Telly, Cleveland, Conwell, Griffin, Hairston, Johnson, Bashir Jones, Joe Jones, Casey, McCormack, Mooney, Polensick, Santana, Sly, Spencer.
Seventeen yays, no nays.
Thank you. Please call the roll on passage.
Kelly, Bishop, Branca Telly, Cleveland, Conwell, Griffin, Hairston, Johnson, Bashir Jones, Joe Jones, Casey, McCormack, Mooney, Polensick, Santana, Sly, Spencer.
Seventeen yays, no nays.
Thank you. First reading emergency resolutions to be adopted.
Resolution forty-seven dash twenty-twenty-one by Councilmember Cleveland, an emergency resolution objecting to the transfer of ownership of a C-one, C-two liquor permit at thirty-six oh nine Community College Boulevard. Resolution forty-eight, twenty-twenty-one by Councilmember Hairston, an emergency resolution objecting to the transfer of ownership of a C-two, C-two X and D-six liquor permit to one twenty-nine oh one Shaw Avenue. Resolution forty-nine dash twenty-twenty-one by Councilmember Joe Jones, an emergency resolution withdrawing objection to a new D-one, D-three, D-three-A liquor permit at one fifty-three oh one Kinsman Road and repealing resolution eight oh five twenty-twenty objecting to said permit. Resolution fifty dash twenty-twenty-one by Councilmember Joe Jones, an emergency resolution withdrawing objection to the renewal of a D-one, D-two, D-three, D-three-A liquor permit at forty-two oh nine East One Thirty-first Street and repealing resolution seven seventeen dash twenty-twenty objecting to said renewal. Resolution fifty-one dash twenty-twenty-one by Councilmember Kelly, an emergency resolution fixing the date of the next regular meeting of council.
Read the motion to suspend the rules.
By Councilmember Johnson, that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage, seconded by Councilmember Casey.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Kelly, Bishop, Branca Telly, Cleveland, Conwell, Griffin, Hairston, Johnson, Bashir Jones, Joe Jones, Casey, McCormack, Mooney, Polensick, Santana, Sly, Spencer.
Seventeen yays, no nays.
Thank you. Please call the roll on adoption.
Kelly, Bishop, Branca Telly, Cleveland, Conwell, Griffin, Hairston, Johnson, Bashir Jones, Joe Jones, Casey, McCormack, Mooney, Polensick, Santana, Sly, Spencer.
Seventeen yays, no nays.
Thank you. Second reading emergency ordinances to be passed.
Ordinance eight thirty-nine twenty-twenty by council members Branca Telly, Kelly, McCormack, Bashir Jones, Griffin, and Zone, an emergency ordinance to amend section one of ordinance eight thirty-two twenty-twenty in order to extend the expiration date of the Temporary Expansion Area Program from June one, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one until November one, twenty-twenty-one for the continued use of private parking lots, streets, and other public rights-of-way including on-street parking areas and parklets as outdoor restaurants. Ordinance nine thirty-seven twenty-twenty by council members Casey and Kelly by departmental request, an emergency ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Utilities to enter into one or more agreements with Cuyahoga County to design, reconstruct, and attach a new trunk main to the New Hilliard Road Bridge over the Rocky River as part of the county's bridge reconstruction project and to provide a prepayment or reimburse the county for the city's share of the improvement. Ordinance nine forty-one twenty-twenty by council members Griffin and Kelly by departmental request, an emergency ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Safety to apply for and accept a grant from the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services for fiscal year twenty State Burn Memorial Justice Assistance Grant for the operation of Northern Ohio Law Enforcement Task Force and authorizing the Director to enter into agreements with various municipalities, Cuyahoga County, and police agencies needed to implement the grant. Ordinance nine forty-three dash twenty-twenty by council members Griffin and Kelly by departmental request, an emergency ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Safety to apply for and accept a grant from Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services for fiscal year nineteen Ohio Drug Law Enforcement Fund Grant for the operation of the Northern Ohio Law Enforcement Task Force and authorizing the Director to enter into agreements with Cuyahoga County's, with the Cuyahoga County Sheriff's Office and other entities to implement the grant. Ordinance nine forty-four dash twenty-twenty by council members Griffin and Kelly by departmental request, an emergency ordinance authorizing Director of Public Safety to apply for and accept a grant from the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services for fiscal year nineteen Project Safe Neighborhoods Grant and to fund the Police Homicide Review Commission and authorizing one or more contracts with the Cuyahoga County Prosecutor's Office to implement the grant. Ordinance nine forty-six twenty-twenty by council members Griffin and Kelly by departmental request, an emergency ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Safety to apply for and accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Public Safety for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one impaired driving enforcement program and selective traffic enforcement program. Ordinance nine fifty-five twenty-twenty by council members Casey and Kelly by departmental request, an emergency ordinance determining the method of making the public improvement of rehabilitating automated control systems at Division of Water Treatment Plants, secondary facilities, and in distribution system, in the distribution system, and authorizing Director of Public Utilities to enter into one or more public improvement contracts for the making of the improvement. Ordinance nine fifty-six twenty-twenty by council members Casey and Kelly by departmental request, an emergency ordinance determining the method of making the public improvement of replacing pump discharge control valves and appurtenances at the Fairmont Pump Station and authorizing the Director of Public Utilities to enter into one or more public improvement contracts for the making of the improvement. Ordinance nine fifty-seven twenty-twenty by council members Casey and Kelly by departmental request, an emergency ordinance authorizing the purchase by one or more requirement contracts of landscape materials, supplies, and services, including labor and materials needed to maintain, test, install, replace, improve, restore, and refurbish landscaping and tree lawns located at city-owned or leased public utility facilities and city rights-of-way for the Division of Water Pollution Control, Cleveland Public Power, and the Office of Radio Communications. Ordinance nine, ordinance nine dash twenty-twenty-one by council members Casey and Kelly by departmental request, an emergency ordinance determining the method of making the public improvement of renovating or replacing four secondary pump stations and authorizing Director of Public Utilities to enter into one or more public improvement contracts for the making of the improvement. Ordinance ten twenty-twenty-one by council members Casey and Kelly by departmental request, an emergency ordinance determining the method of making the public improvement of renewing a transmission main including valves and related appurtenances underneath the Cuyahoga River near Harvard Avenue and authorizing Director of Public Utilities to enter into one or more public improvement contracts for the making of the improvement. Ordinance eleven twenty-twenty-one by council members Casey and Kelly by departmental request, an emergency ordinance determining the method of making the public improvement of repairing or replacing roofs and appurtenances, including but not limited to roofing systems for the Division of Water Department of Public Utilities, authorizing the Director to enter into one or more public improvement contracts for the making of the improvement and authorizing the purchase by one or more requirement contracts of labor and materials necessary to maintain, test, evaluate, repair, or replace roofs and appurtenances, including but not limited to roofing systems for the various divisions of the Department of Public Utilities. Ordinance twelve twenty-twenty-one by council members Casey and Kelly by departmental request, an emergency ordinance authorizing the purchase by one or more requirement contracts of concrete pipe adapters, repair saddles, and accessories for the Division of Water Department of Public Utilities. Ordinance thirteen twenty-twenty-one by council members Casey and Kelly by departmental request, an emergency ordinance authorizing the purchase by one or more requirement contracts of labor and materials necessary to repair and maintain the decorative and special lighting for city bridges and the Wieland Whale Euro Park on North Marginal Road, including materials, equipment, appurtenances, services, and insurance for the Division of Cleveland Public Power, Department of Public Utilities, for a period of two years with two one-year options to renew, the first which requires additional legislative authority. Ordinance fourteen twenty-twenty-one by council members Casey and Kelly by departmental request, an emergency ordinance authorizing Director of Public Utilities to make alterations and modifications in a contract with Terrace Construction Company for constructing the East Eighty-Fifth Street and Chester Parkway area sewer project and authorizing the Director to apply for and accept funding from the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District for community cost-sharing program funding to implement this ordinance.
Thank you. Read the motion to suspend the rules.
By Councilmember Johnson, that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage, seconded by Councilmember Casey.
Please call the roll.
Kelly, Bishop, Branca Telly, Cleveland, Conwell, Griffin, Hairston, Johnson, Bashir Jones, Joe Jones.
Jones, Joe Jones, Casey, McCormack, Mooney, Polensick, Santana.
Seventeen yays.
Sly and Sly and Spencer.
Seventeen yays, no nays.
Call the roll on passage.
Kelly, Bishop, Branca Telly, Cleveland, Conwell, Griffin, Hairston, Johnson, Bashir Jones, Joe Jones, Casey, McCormack, Mooney, Polensick, Santana, Sly, Spencer.
Seventeen yays, no nays.
Thank you. This concludes the legislative agenda. There are no absences to excuse today, so if there's nothing for the good of the order, this council is adjourned. The call of the chair, Councilman Polensick. You can unmute yourself.
Now, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Miscellaneous, do you have any idea or timeframe as to when you might call, using the power of subpoena, to call people to the table about issue six and specifically with regard to the consumers against deceptive fees? I've I have these flyers that were mailed into my ward on numerous occasions, at least three times, possibly four, and I'd like to know or have some time with timeframe when people would be brought to the table so we could ask some questions.
Certainly. So, Councilman, right now I am working with our attorneys in law department.
Okay.
Together to determine what our subpoena power is. I will know more by the next time we meet, and if you want to talk between then, once I get information, I'll give you a call, but it is actively being pursued right now.
Okay. That's what I need to know there because there's still a lot of outstanding questions and concerns I have about what was done, who was connected to it, and so I'd like to, because obviously my ward was targeted by the mailings and because we have the largest, Greater Collinwood Council, myself and Councilman Hairston have the largest customer base on the east side than, obviously you come in second as a large customer base on the west side as well, so I'd like to, I'd like to really know who is behind all this stuff and who was paid, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you. I look forward to that.
I have about three hundred and fifty one thousand questions myself.
Okay.
One for each dollar that we're still trying to track down, so it's certainly something that's that's on my mind and we're going to follow through on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brian Casey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, have we got any word on the census or the redrawing of these, the ward boundaries? And do you know yet if if that's going to be done or are we up for election this year? Are we running in our current wards or is there an update on any of that?
I'm going to give you my best, the best knowledge that I have, and again, this could change based on what happens in Washington. We need to have a certified count back to us, and it's got to go from the Census Bureau to the Secretary of State for certification to us by February sixteenth in order to draw lines, in order to reapportion according to the new census. Um, again, I can't say this with absolute certainty, but by my, by my guesstimation, we are not going to get it in time, and the reason I say that is because of all the chaos that is going on within the Census Bureau, and even in good times, we normally don't get it until late February anyhow, so we would need to get it by date certain February sixteenth. Rachel, our attorney, Rachel Nigro, Scali, she's in constant communication with the Board of Elections monitoring this date, and that is the date that is agreed upon by the Board of Elections, but because of the chaos that is that is happening, I consider it unlikely. In the event that we do have to redistrict, Alan has started reaching out to to those that can that can do this work in the event that we have to quickly spring into action, so please don't take my words as a guarantee, but as we sit here today on the twentieth of January, I am confident that they will not have the data back to us in time to redistrict for the twenty twenty one elections.
All right, I know our former president's, um, Census Bureau chief resigned a couple of days ago, so I don't, I don't know if that's going to push it back or not or either, but either way, if we could, you know, keep us in the loop, you know, as soon as anybody would know anything or hear anything, I'm just, you know, with this being an election year, you know, the last thing we want to do is get thrown on us at the last second.
Right. Well, there was a time, just on that, on that point, Councilman, there was a time where I was very confident that there's no way they're going to get it back to us, but then the former president pulled all the field, the field workers out of the field and demanded that it be done on time, and then then I thought maybe, but now with the court challenges and the resignation and the fact that he is thankfully no longer the president, hopefully we're going to take a second look at it because in addition to the concern of our council races, I have a concern that we always fight with with an undercount with the census, I have a concern this is just going to be a really bad census and it's going to be very much not representative of the city of Cleveland, so to me, there's there's a reason that we want this to not be rushed down to us.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jenny Spencer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just following up on my colleague Councilman Casey's question, in the event that census results are not received by February sixteenth, when would be the date that City of Cleveland or City Council redistricts?
It would be in the subsequent election. Except for Ward fifteen, I think Ward fifteen would be redist, would have a next election.
Got it.
Okay. Okay, if there is nothing else for the good of the order, we are adjourned. We will meet again on February third, twenty twenty one. Everybody have a great day. Enjoy this great.